All right. I'd like to call the town commission meeting to order for July 26th. Please stand and pledge in the invocation. I pledge allegiance.
Father God, once again, thank you for entrusting us with your town, for giving us another opportunity, and for us to make decisions for your citizens here. I ask you for your wisdom and discernment this evening for all our staff and our council members. I ask you all this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Sal. All right, Alicia.
Here. Present.
Here, start. Here. Fisher McMullin. I just heard that he was not here, however, we have a call. All right. The first thing is I have the pleasure to do some employee recognition. Thank you, Noreen. I think you were the one who put this together. And this is a service milestone. So our employees, I'll call them cast members, will be getting these plaques on their service milestones. They're very pretty.
Wow.
So I'm going to read the names off of the people that we're looking to recognize right now. And that would be Colton Horn for five years. Jamil Dib for five. Jason Hayes for five. Kurt Cruz, five. They're all from the police department. Luis Reyes for five. Bradley Fincher for five. Scott Townsend for five. All the public works. Stacy Quinn for 10, and she is Oakland PD. And Adrian Cowan for 10, and he's in the public work. So when you see these folks around, please be sure and congratulate them, and they'll be getting their plaques very soon. Okay? Next, Jennifer, you are up for Oakland Nature Preserve Annual Update.
Hello, hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hi. So is this functional with these? It should be awesome. It's turned out. Can't remember. Now, okay. Oh, hold on. All right. Keep it away, Ms. Jennifer. All right. Well, hello, everyone. I can't believe it's been a year since I have been here to update you on all of the exciting things happening at the preserve. And I'm pleased to be able to say they are exciting things. So we have been staying extremely busy, lots of projects, and I'll give you some room just a moment. So first of all, our visitor numbers are staying steady. Our first year of COVID, our visitor numbers jumped dramatically. We are estimating somewhere between 35,000 and 45,000 visiting the preserve each year. And we believe those numbers are staying steady this year. Now, we don't have exact numbers because our sign-in sheets just started kicking off again this past spring for me to be able to extrapolate out numbers. But just anecdotally, and just what we're seeing around the preserve is staying very steady and very busy. And just very excited about that, to say the least. Our school field trips are back in full swing, which is another just awesome thing that's happening right now. Oakland Avenue Charter, for those that don't know, we have the wonderful collaboration with the school and Pam and all of the teachers there to allow all of the classes from Oakland Avenue Charter to visit the preserve. We're starting with the fifth graders at the beginning of the year, all the way down to the kindergarteners at the end of the year, giving each student a full day at the preserve. And our education coordinator, Rachel Cravens, meets with the class, the teachers at grade levels to find out what can we do to help supplement and support the science that's being taught at the school. And so those children are back, and it's a lot of fun to watch them grow year to year. Our Innovative Montessori is back with us as well. We have their fourth through sixth graders four times each year, and they join us every Tuesday and every Thursday for a four-part series. So if you look at those numbers, we have over 800 student days for Montessori. We have all of the students from Oakland Avenue Charter plus other field trips totaling about 1,800 student days at the preserve this year. So very excited about that. Summer camps are also back in full swing. This year, we had six weeks of camp filled to capacity. And very excited to say that the Oakland Police Department participated in one of our camps this year. They came after we had a staged break-in of our classroom. And so they worked with Swirlock Holmes and Dr. Stotson to teach our campers how to work a crime scene and how to take fingerprints. They were a lot of fun, and I really appreciate them coming out and giving us a hand. We also participated in the Health of West Orange Splash Challenge this year. Other programs that we have had this year is our Florida Master Naturalist Program is back in full swing, and we're going live for the first time in two years this fall. Our Tinker Garden Collaboration that we do, which is a preschool nature program, had a full crowd this summer. So they had 40 preschoolers participating in June and July with their outdoor activities. Our scout programs are back and are happening on a regular basis. Our Firefly hikes, we had over 1,000 people over four nights come out to enjoy the fireflies. Our Blue Hikes with our fearless leader Jim Peterson. We're quite active this year with a total of 48 participants. Our preschoolers are back for storytime, and our weekly programs, yoga and senior strides, are quite active. So over the past year, we've had several events. We had our open house. Our Pumpkin Glow Jack-o'-lantern Trail was back again this past year. We added the Holiday Reef Walk, where individuals were able to bed on reefs that had been created by the community. Our Pores at the Preserve, and also our Bubbly on the Boardwalk, which were both ticketed events. Bubbly being sold out. Hopefully, they'll sell out Pores this coming year. Volunteers, can't do anything at the preserve without our volunteers. This year, we have a total of 319 volunteers signed in with over 4,600 volunteer hours from July through May. We have, I mean, they have been staying so busy. We even have a group of, I think, 30 coming in on Thursday to do a native plant planting on Thursday morning at the preserve. They're staying super, super busy, and once again, can't do it without our volunteers. Not only have they helped with restoration, they do events. We have some train for animal care data entry. We have our museum docents. We have our teen volunteers, including our eco interpreters and our leaders in training that assist us with summer camp. And the nice thing is, we also have our scouts. We have two Eagle Scout projects that are in progress, a Girl Scout Bronze Award project, and two Girl Scouts Silver Award projects that are all in progress. Restoration over 1,000 trees went in, over 3,000 native plants. And also completed a prescribed burn this year on the east side of the preserve. We do have a burn scheduled for the west side this coming next year. This will be the first time that we've done one with the new whole island building there. And our burn boss is already kind of watching how things will be progressing for that so that we can keep our residents informed of what to expect. Social media, of course, it is still expanding like it is everywhere. We have a 19% increase in our Facebook followers. We have page visits, you know, monthly of over 300. I do want to point out one post that was shared on our Facebook page that we end up having to turn off our, all of our ringers on our phones because it was blowing up. But it was blowing up in a good way. There was a python found down in the Everglades that a bobcat decided to go and visit and eat the python eggs. We put it on our Facebook page. It finally shut down at over 350,000 reaches. 350,000 reaches. That is not our norm, but it was very exciting, very exciting. And of course, our Instagram page is also expanding with 128% Instagram follower increase. Projects, we finished the bathrooms. I've never been so excited about bathrooms in my life. So we added three bathrooms on a new wraparound back porch. As you can see, those three bathrooms are done outhouse style, but they're definitely not outhouses inside. It is quite modern with two exterior sinks. This has been probably the most, the project that made the most impact when it comes to our students at the preserve, even just summer campers. When you only have two bathrooms and you have 25 preschoolers, that's not a good thing. To five bathrooms, which is amazing. New project this year, and I really want to highlight this because it makes a huge difference for some local high school students. We were approached by a local family foundation who wanted to be able to have some type of impact with climate change. And so I recommended that we might do some type of scholarship program for high schoolers. They jumped on the chance, and the first year, they put $20,000 in the pot. And we were very pleased that we were able to give out four scholarships to recipients, three from Oakville High School, and one from Innovative Montessori totaling $20,000. And that program will happen again this year for our West Orange County High School seniors and high school students.
Oh, wow.
Yep. Upcoming events, we have our new Nature Fest at O and P. For those who don't know, this year, our Oakland Heritage and Wildlife Festival has been divided. So we will be having Nature Fest at the preserve this year in September, and then the Oakland Heritage Festival in Spear Park, town of Oakland, in January. By doing this, we're able to really focus on those two specific topics and give them what they are doing. Definitely mark your calendar for this 24th of September for Nature Fest and the 28th of January for October Heritage Fest. Challenges, I think this is the same challenge that we are all having right now, is the rising cost of goods and services. So we have two projects right now that this is affecting, including our biannual building staining, which between our estimate in February and our new estimate last week, there was a 50% increase. So we are scrambling a little bit for that. And we're also working closely with the town for the increase for our septic-to-sewer project that we have.
Whoever knew I'd be so excited about some. Not bathrooms, I got sewer.
There you go. And that is what I have. Do I have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I only have thanks for you and the great job you and your staff are doing down there. And as I've always said, and I continue to say, that this will be the finest legacy we leave to generations to come.
It is an amazing, amazing place, and we could not do it with the town and the commission's support. So thank you very, very much for that support. And for those that have not made it out there to see me yet, come out and see me, and let me give you a tour.
And does anybody else from the.
No, I agree.
Questions or comments?
Thank you so much.
I got some questions.
Okay.
If you were, what's your plan, Scott? What would you need if, of course, we don't have a limited amount of funds, but what's your plan, Scott? What would you really need to do everything that you really want to do?
Everything that we would want to do.
What would that financial number look like?
Well, there is, there are two large projects that are sitting out there that are on my list. We've been able to do two large projects in the past three years, and I've got two more to do. One of which is the basic rebuild of the fish cabin, which is the last existing fish cabin from Lake Apokka. It's falling apart, and we're talking 75,000.
Been sitting there for a while.
Yes. And the other is building a pole barn, storage, and museum space to take the place of our current sheds. And that's another probably 75,000.
So what's the total number?
That'd be 175. The changes in our costs dealing with the sewer and the building, we're talking about another 50 on top of that.
So set 250 to be.
Quarter of a million.
Yep.
Yeah, 250, okay. You guys have a grant writer out there?
Oh, we live off of grant money.
Okay.
And there are some foundations that are local, correct?
We have a lot of support, and one of it always is your foundation. The other is Bond Foundation.
Right, right, right.
So Bond has always been a huge.
Big supporter for.
Yeah, but outside of that, those are the only ones you counted.
Although there are two local, but we receive.
Right, right, right.
Some maintenance funding through Orange County DEP.
Okay.
So they have it, it's now set in their budget yearly that we receive $15,000 just to go towards maintenance.
Okay.
Which is a very handy thing for a lot of smaller ones that are more project-based.
Mr. Parker, can they get access to the grant system that we have? At least have someone in their office kind of play around? Because we have a grant portal that we can, we plug into the Four League of Cities. And it's open to any city in town in the state of Florida. We have, you know, certificates that, you know, your town.
We have limited access. You can come over anytime, anytime.
I'll connect you with Denise. Yeah, awesome.
Every Monday it gets updated.
Right, right.
Every Monday.
In the state and federal funds, there'll be a lot of funds out there.
Yep.
And then the other piece, when you sent out the information about the scholarships, how do you communicate that out to the community?
So this past year, we actually worked with a gentleman from Orange County Schools.
Okay.
Who shot it out to the guidance counselors and sent it to all the science teachers. And then on top of that, of course, we did a system meeting and all of that.
All right, and I'll land on this. Is Alicia telling this story? Because I happened to meet someone this week, didn't know, didn't know anything about. Of course, I know, you can't capture anyone. But this is a great story, you know, you know, this, you know, nature preserve, I used to use it years ago for art class, 10 years ago. And so we always try to do our best to get the word out, you know, we have you there. You know, we just got to tell this story about what's going on.
Alicia definitely sends out for us, and so does The Observer. The Observer is one of our strongest supporters as well. That being said, it's our locals that have a hard time finding us.
Right, right, exactly, right.
Around the world have no problem finding us.
Right, so I would.
Interesting.
Because they show up in Orange County. What is there to do outside near Disney? And we show up on the first page.
Wow.
So we have people that come, I mean, I had a wonderful family from Brazil this morning. You know, they're like, oh, we found you on Google. That's great. So it's our locals that.
Yeah, any other posts that they're doing, we're generally sharing those. We're getting the information now. Jennifer and Alicia talk quite often.
And I'm sorry, I got one more question. Are we, can we quantify this, how it affects us, you know, ecotourism dollars or whatever? Is there any, is there any way we can plug into that, measure it, measure it? Because I know years ago, there's a, there's a big pusher all around Lake Apokka and all the different areas.
And that's still out there with, with Lake Apokka. I don't, I don't have any way to quantify it, honestly. I haven't seen anything. But I know, like, working with Joe Dunn and friends of Lake Apokka with O and P, you know, the connections that they want to make so that you got the full loop around Lake Apokka and then the ability to get that out to more places.
Right.
As those connections are made. So, you know, Orange County's underway on their side, and they've got Magnolia Park, which is getting close to being open. And they've got, I believe, some kind of environmental center out there, and they've redone all the parking and fishing pier and a bunch of stuff going on at Magnolia Park that will be connected to by trail sooner than later. So, so it's out there. I just don't know how to quantify it at this point.
Yeah, and since we can't give exact numbers, we can only guess who's coming through our gates since we don't charge any type of admission, and we can't charge an admission because that's where our property was first set up. Yeah. But.
And then the state's doing it on their side with the Greenways and Trails and, you know, the Cross Border Trail. And they're really getting that, starting to get that information out. You know, they're trying to make those connections out on, there's like three or four connections that are left to make that. And you'll have a trail that'll go from, I believe, Pinellas County to Brevard County. And comes right, you know, this is part of it right here. So, so there's a lot going on with pushing that ecotourism, but I'm not sure how to actually, you know, quantify the, the economic. I'm sure there'll be something out there.
I hope, I hope we can do it. All right, I'll stop.
Yep.
That's good. Your brain is like clicking.
I love it.
I mean, I had a, I had a meeting with somebody this weekend, you know, was talking about environment. I'm like, you know, we have one of the best, you know, nature preserves in the country here, and you, you know, it's right down the street. And they didn't know anything about it. So, and I was trying to tell them how ecotourism was real, was a big pusher one time at the state, and they still didn't know what was going on. So, yeah, I'm like.
I see a lot of.
On the gym, I was like, yeah.
I see a lot of stuff on trails, and like, I get some information out of, out of Lake County that talks specifically to, to the paved trails and what kind of an impact that has.
Do we still, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Do we still have that brochure? Has that ever been updated? I love that, the four, the four cities. I think the chamber did it. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, it's been a little while.
Yeah, I don't know if they still do that or not. I should add, I'll ask Skeena next time I see her, because I thought that was so informative. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But didn't they just do it? I didn't know Alicia was right there.
We just sent you back to Twitter, it comes out soon, I could find out what it's taking.
Okay. That would be, that'd be great. I just always thought that was so handy. I would, like, when we took people around, Rick Scott's office is coming down next week for a tour. And when we would take people for a tour, that was really handy to have, talk about that.
And see, that was part of a conversation I had with someone. They're trying to keep, keep this whole area the quiet area, but there's some great things you can tell. And some people just don't want to tell the story, and it's kind of scary. Of course, we don't, you know, so I would say this, I always said, my mayor wants us, when people come here, they remind, they, they want to come back.
Yes.
We still got to let people know that we're here. And it's a, it's a push to keep people from not knowing that we're here.
I don't know who's pushing that, because.
They, they want to keep the city town feel or the area. They want, you know, West Orange County to stay that quiet, quiet town, but it's a way to do it, and still.
Right, right. And maintain our identity and, yes. And, you know, we find that if we can get, you know, getting the word out to everybody is very important.
Yeah.
And I want people to come back, and I want them to use ecotourism.
Right.
Come see the nature preserve, go down to the dock, whatever it is. But I also see the value in when we can get high-ranking officials, elected officials out here to look at, to take them around and give them a tour, because some of the things that we're doing here are so much more sophisticated than meets the eye of a small town. And they're always surprised by what we're, what we have going around here. You know, the sewer, the, you know, the, the things that you just don't even think about. So we took Val Demings around, and her office really jumped on things, you know, that we needed and really helped us out. And, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, this is, I think it's Rick's chief of staff that's coming. So I'm hoping that that will, you know, garner some more support. And regardless of where you stand politically, these people are elected, and they're the people who can help us while they're in office. I don't care if you're purple with bunny ears. You know, it matters not to me. You're elected, and that's what you're here to do, is to serve. So, yes, you're right. You're absolutely right, Joseph.
Yeah. Well, we, you have stuff like Winter Garden just exploding, and I think it got out of hand. And you got, oh, cool, it's starting to explode, this is getting out of hand, and, yeah.
You know, we have to be careful of that.
Right, right, right.
Be ready for that. But, you know, it's not, it's, it's, you know, what are you going to do? Put a gate up?
Right.
You know? Can't do that. But we do need, you know, we do want to maintain our identity.
Nope.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments?
I'm just going to tell you, your bathroom project flushes away competition. On that note, I have a seat.
Oh, yeah. Tell Derek, tell Derek you said, she said that. All right, I'm sorry. We are moving on to public forum. Anyone who is here who has something to say about something that is not on the agenda tonight, this is your chance. We ask that you keep your comments very brief. Come to the podium and tell us who you are. Okay. Consent agenda, do we have anything we want to pull out of that, or are we good to vote on it?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second it.
Okay, it's seconded. Any questions, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to our very fun ordinances. First public hearing ordinance 2022-16.
Okay, this is our first public hearing ordinance 2022-16. The town of Oakland, the county of Fickel Landes, plan map doesn't make up its comprehensive plan from low-density Zeros, it's a commercial in the town of Oakland's comprehensive plan for certain real property owned by Ideal Builder Five LLC. Being an Orange County property appraiser, parcel number 21-22-27-0000-00-312. Located at the following address, 302 East Avenue with an approximate size of .6 acres. Making findings and providing for conflict severability and for an effective date.
All right, so you're going to hear me quite a bit tonight, so.
Oh, dang.
Today's retirement, I'm going to handle the presentation tonight. I do have Brett Formilio here to my right that can handle any of the technical details that we might, any, you know, technical questions we might have on, on this project. So this is a 302 East Oakland Avenue location. So if you're looking at that, you can see it's right next to the preparing church. It's right on the corner of Star Street and Oakland Avenue, right next to Pastor Reeves. And there are two residential properties in the back.
Where does that Spanish-looking house fall into this? Okay, gotcha. That's what I kept glitching on.
This is school or something? I should do music.
It was a residential.
I thought somebody did music lessons over there one time.
That they might have, but it was, it was its own residential. So this is the, the property there on the corner, 302 East Oakland Avenue.
That's why I kept glitching on it when you were telling me this. I wasn't thinking that it was that house. Okay.
All right, so there's three steps in this process. First one is going to be the comp plan amendment. The step two is going to be the rezoning to see one commercial. And then step three will be the site plan and design review. And this will have to be the town code, including the design districts. So the applicant intends to use this as an office for brokerage and property management. All right, again, there's the site. So again, this step one is to amend the.
Future.
Plan. And you've got the future land use map in front of you. So right now, it's residential. So the idea, and just, just to kind of give you some perspective here. So if you look straight across the street there on Oakland Avenue, you see those, there's a couple of residences right there that show up as red. And when we get to the zoning, it'll make a little more sense. Those particular properties right there directly across are, are the, and you've got the, the table in front of you for zoning. I made sure you had these because there were some questions when we were at PNC last week. But those are actually going to be zoned RNC, or they are zoned RNC, which is residential neighborhood commercial. And they allow for things like bed and breakfast. Well, there's some, some special exceptions, but you can look at the column there, and there are a few things that are allowed there, including mixed-use dwelling, live-work store, a single-family dwelling, townhouse. But you can do like a retail kind of a situation in there. So that's why they show up as red, even though they're actually, at this point, residences. So.
I'm probably getting ahead of myself, but can we think about this like in terms of the sewing place that's at the end of my street?
Yeah.
It's kind of on the same parallel.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if that helps anybody.
Well, just, just to put it in perspective, so if you look to the, you know.
End of mine and Sal's street.
To the west side. To the west side, you have institutional to the right. You've got the school, which is institutional. To the, to the south, you've got commercial in the red. There are two residents there. Pastor Reeves' house is directly behind it. And then Nancy Phillips has that larger square. See if I got my.
You also have Pastor Reeves to the east.
Yes.
Even though that shows.
So the, the daycare and the church are on the, on the, on the east side. And then the residence is behind. And then you have Nancy Phillips as a resident that lives.
Right.
Directly behind there, right adjacent to the tractor.
It doesn't show as institutional.
No, it's, it's, it's still showing up under the, uh, the, the, um, fellow desert city residential. But so you kind of get a perspective on, on what's around, around the property. And so what they're looking to do is change this to C one commercial, which kind of fits into that particular area, especially with the offices across from the school. Um, and like I said, they, they want to do it as a, uh, essentially as an office for property management and the brokerage. And we do have a representative for the owner here, um, that can speak if you have any questions. Um, but there was quite a bit of discussion at the P and Z board, but ultimately they did approve this four to one. Um, the planning and zoning board also recommended that the applicant work with the neighbors on Star Street prior to coming forward with the site plan. Uh, there was a little bit of discussion about adding on to the building, um, but I, I think we kind of backed off on that and we're just looking at the offices.
Yeah.
Um, so that's where a lot of the discussion came as far as talking with the, with the neighbor. But, uh, right now it's just set up. And like I said, when they come in with the site plan, parking and those kinds of things, uh, there's not a lot of room set to add. Um, and they'll have to meet our design districts and, and code. So the recommendation, uh, from P and Z was, uh, again, for the, uh, to go to the commission for approval. So, uh, the recommended approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixteen to amend the future land use plan map of the comprehensive plan from residential commercial, uh, for property located at three oh two East Oakland Avenue pursuant to consistency with comprehensive plan policies and existing character of immediate area.
All right. Um, this is a public hearing. So I need a motion.
We have some questions before.
Well, we can ask after the motion or before. It doesn't matter, I guess. You want to ask before?
Oh, I'd like to. Yes.
I'm just, I'm sure this came up, the question came up with a sewing shop, but I can't remember. So if the owner decided to sell this property a year from now, what can go in there? I mean.
If you look at your table, uh, C one zoning. Um, I mean, that's, but essentially you're working off of the C one zoning and you're working off of the design districts and the town code. So the designer also kind of narrow things as to what you can do, uh, in that particular area. But that's, uh, the C one is, um, are the things that could be in that.
C one, okay.
So once you get C one, you've got it, whether it changes hands or not.
Well, right now the intent is for, for the office. So.
Right.
If there's any significant changes to that, there'll be some, some discussion. And Brad and Stephanie can chime in as far as, as some of the, the technical aspects of that, but that's, that's what you've got as far as C one zoning.
What's the S C and P stand for?
Yes, the S E would be special exception, meaning they have to come in and ask for that particular use.
It wouldn't be a special exception for hotel motel?
Well, you also have to think of the size of them.
Yeah.
So you're, you're constrained. You're constrained by the size of the property as to what you would be able to do.
As I would say in my experience with, you know, and Sal's experience, something that's where we live, it's not inclusive at all.
No, that's, that was going to ask the applicant more questions towards traffic, staff, some of the questions we asked for the sewing company. Right. What type of traffic? Sorry, I don't want to. Hello.
Hi, my name is Bella. I am the broker representative of the brokerage and property management company.
So let's say my question is more of what, what kind of, uh, traffic will you be having there as far as Monday through Friday? Is it open Saturday and Sunday? I know it's a brokerage shit. I know it's ma- property management. Most property managements are Monday through Friday.
Yeah, uh, it is a Monday through Friday. Um, we today have about seven people in staff. Um, the brokerage is pretty new, so we are, um, our growth plan is to have twenty by the end of the year. However, Realtors don't go to the office.
Correct.
Um, you're probably looking on a three every three month basis for actual kind of like. Um, every three months we will trainings come in. That's probably all the marketing there is going to be, that are basically aren't up.
And the improvements for the building itself is only going to be based on the existence, you guys.
Right. We had, um, so I guess what brought the first discussion initially, um, was, uh, a lot was that I had mentioned that we had the desire to do this extension. If you actually see the house, I'm pretty sure it means it's pretty close by. The house is, is a box. It's a square box. So, um, with our offices, we would be, you know, completely out of space to do training. So then we wanted to do a small extension of the property itself to hold those trainings. But it would be for the builders and low density and other people, um, it just for the trainings or larger conference room. Um, to speak about our projects, we are Brazilian, so we have a lot of people coming in and out of the country to meet us. Uh, we are investors in Brazil as well. So, um, but again, it's low density and people working there, they, it's, it wouldn't go over check on nine to five, nine to six timeframe. Special exceptions every three months.
Yeah. So far, good.
Okay. Um. I get a motion on the table quick.
Uh, I'll make a motion to accept ordinance two zero two two dash one six.
I'll second it.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Comer?
Uh, um, well, uh, my life with, with Commissioner, um, Pauline mentioned, you know, what, what could happen. So.
Right.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's my only reservation. What could happen? No, actually, is it inappropriate for me to ask, what was the one vote? What was the purpose? What was the reason of the one? No vote. The inappropriate answer?
I don't remember.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I, I, I know a little bit of discussion with it being, uh, close to the residential across the street.
Okay.
So what happened exactly was the, uh, they were changing to resident, that's the reason. And when I mentioned that I wanted to do an extension, I knew we're on a forum, uh, because that's how that's exact translation.
Okay, okay.
So more of a, a misused in verbiage in.
Okay.
A lot of ground sound and then she talked about like a gas station and how it was going to become a new commercial area and. One. I'm here. That is not the intention. And it will be just.
Okay.
I have another question. How many parking space are you going to have?
The funny thing is they have the, yeah, projected, there's water out of state. Um, that is deep right now. Um, so we were planning on having all of those spaces in, in parking areas. Um, and then the extension will be on the back of the property. So there are plenty. We're going to have architect this week going out and I'll probably. On the next day.
So, I mean, do you contemplate you're going to be paving or concreting?
I was thinking, uh, mostly along the lines of brick papers, just because it would look more upsettingly. Like you guys already.
I'd like to hear that.
And they'll have to consider small water and that kind of things too, as they get to the site plan process.
Okay.
Okay, right. Good. Okay. So any other questions?
Okay.
Oh. Okay. Um, I am going to open this public hearing to the audience. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If you do, please approach the podium and let us know who you are and keep your comments brief. Okey dokey. I'm going to close the public hearing and take it back to the table for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we're moving on to sec, uh, first public, our second item, first public hearing ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash seventeen.
Okay, so this is the first public hearing, twenty twenty-seven, ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, amending the town's official zoning map. R one A, single family residential to C one commercial for certain real property owned by Ideal Builder. And you know, five LLC, buried property tax parcel identification number twenty-one dash twenty-two dash twenty-seven dash zero 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 dash zero 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 one two and making findings and providing for conflict severability and for an effective date.
Okay. These are all yours.
All right. So step two is the amendment of the zoning district map, map from R one A to C one. And as you can see, again, this is a little deceiving with, with the school and the church. Uh, all this is shown as R one A. Across the street, you can see that the candy cane striped areas are the R N C that I spoke of before, which is the residential and neighborhood commercial. So there's some very distinct, um, commercial things that can be done on those properties. Um, so, and this does kind of fit into the Oakland corner bar where we have some definitely there at the corner or at the four way stop of Tuck Street and Oakland Avenue, where we are looking at some, some commercial all there. And you've got the commercial that's across from the school, we've got a C two zoning and a, a C one zoning across from the school. Um, it, it was posted, uh, with the zoning change. Uh, same recommendation from the, uh, planning and zoning, uh, board. Uh, they did recommend a approval, uh, the one, um, and they did stipulate, you know, the planning or they did recommend that, uh, yeah, come work with the neighbors on Star Street prior to coming forward with the site plan.
Okay. So, um, we'll follow, I guess we'll follow the same format. Do we have any questions at the table? No questions? Okay. I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve first public hearing of ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash seventeen.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Um, we will open it again to the audience. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Please come up to the podium. Tell us who you are. Okay. Bring it back to the table. Close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Second public hearing ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash oh nine.
So I'm going to just preface this. You've got a, an annexation, uh, comp plan amendment and a zoning for a particular property. I'm not going to go through the whole presentation. This is the second reading. Uh, to put it in context, uh, the property is over in the Colani area, um, on Broad Street. And you have a picture of the site right there. There is a single family house on it at this point. Um, and they are also providing an improvement, um, to the town for future utility connections. Uh, Mike can speak to this project or to this particular, if you have any, um, any questions on it, but we'll go through first with the annexation and then, uh, the comp plan and zoning. You've got three ordinances.
Okay, this will be the second reading.
Yes, this is a sign of public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-two zero nine and ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, annexed by voluntary petition. Certain real property owned by Kendall Alberna, bearing property tax personal identification number nineteen dash twenty-two dash twenty-seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero dash zero zero three with an address of one seven five zero zero Broad Street. And located contiguous to the town of Oakland in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section one seventy-one point zero four four. Florida statutes of the controlling law, redefining the boundaries of the town of Oakland to include said property, providing for findings, providing for conditions. Directing the town clerk to report the ordinance with the clerk of circuit court, with the chief administrative officer of Orange County. And with the department of state, providing for legal description and map for appealing all ordinances and conflict therewith. Providing for severability, providing for non-codification and the taking of administrative actions and providing for an effective date.
So Steve, since, for my edification, since I wasn't here, this is planned to be what?
It's going to continue to be a residence. The, the main driver for this to come into the town is they need access to our water.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
They're on a, a, if I remember correctly, they're on a, I shared well among three property owners and they would like to be on the town's water system.
Okay. So we're bringing them into the town to do that. It'd be cheaper for them.
Yes.
Way in the long run. Um, any questions at the table?
Yeah.
All right. I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance two zero two two dash zero nine.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Um, I'll open a public hearing for the audience. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Right. I'll close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Second public hearing ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash M.
Okay, second public hearing ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten and ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, changing the town's future land use map. And now designation of its comprehensive plan for rural and Orange County comprehensive plan to low density residential in the town of Oakland's comprehensive plan for certain real property owned by Kendall Alberna, the Orange County property appraiser. Parcel number nineteen dash twenty-two dash twenty-seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero dash zero zero three. Located at the following address, one seven five zero zero Broad Street, with two acres, making findings and providing for conflict severability for an effective date.
Okay. Any questions at the table?
Make a motion and approve ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash ten.
Okay.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. I'm going to open a public hearing. Any questions, comments from the audience? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Second public hearing twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash eleven.
Second public hearing ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven and ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, amending the town's zoning map designation from May line. Either culture in Orange County to our one single family residential in the town of Oakland. Certain real property owned by Kendall Alberna, bearing property tax personal identification number eighteen dash twenty-two dash twenty-seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero dash zero zero three and making findings and providing for conflict severability and.
Any questions, any comments at the table?
No.
I need a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve ordinance two zero two two dash one one.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. I'm opening a public hearing. Any questions, any comments? Close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Second public hearing ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve.
All right, just, uh, I'll just preview this one real quick and then, uh, then at least you can read the, uh, the title. So again, this, this one is just annexation. This property is on the Lake County line. It is on Old Highway fifty, right across from, um, the Colani Station, uh, trailhead. Um, it is approximately, I believe, two acres, uh, right adjacent to the open trail. Uh, the applicant does own property on the Lake County side. Um, yes, he expressed at the last meeting that they, they, they could do something like, um, assisted living or independent living facility. Um, but at this point, it's just an annexation of that property.
Okay. Any class?
Oh, go.
You gotta read it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So this is.
Missed that part. Yeah. Second public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve and ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, annexed by voluntary petition, certain real property owned by London Central LLC. Bearing property tax identification number thirty dash twenty-two dash twenty-seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero dash zero zero three and thirty dash twenty-two dash twenty-seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero dash zero three nine and thirty dash twenty-two three seven zero 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 dash zero zero dash zero three two with addresses of one seven nine eight seven and one seven nine seven nine. State Road four thirty-eight and located contiguous to the town of Oakland in accordance with voluntary annexation provisions of section one seventy-one point oh four four Florida statutes and other controlling law, redefining the boundaries of the town of Oakland to include said property, providing for findings. Providing for conditions, directing the town clerk to report the ordinance with the clerk of circuit court, the state of officer of Orange County. And with the department of state, providing for legal description and map, revealing all ordinances and conflict therewith, ready for severability and providing for non-codification and taking administrative actions and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Any questions at the table? Okay, I need a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve second hearing of ordinance two. Make a motion to approve second hearing of ordinance 2022-12.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, I'm gonna open a public hearing, any questions, any comments? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the table, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next one I think is exciting, it's branding discussion and approval. I know that Alicia is here for that as well, let's go.
I'm here online. Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, for the record, Alicia Papacota, Administrative Services and Communications Director for the town of Oakland, and I am super excited to present to you the proposed branding identity. A little bit of background, for all are very aware that we can work on this project for some time. So it started in 2020 when I came to you and you all approved moving forward. We developed a new branding, but that was right at the beginning of COVID, so it kind of put a little bit of a damper on our plans. So in October of last year, the town proposed RFP, posted RFP 2021, and we received actually six proposals, I have seven in the PowerPoints, just a little correction. The branding committee was proud to award the contract to Allery Design, an award-winning local agency led by Joe Allery, who's with us today. And the purpose of this branding refresh, as we like to call it, is to refresh the town's existing logo and streamline multiple logos into one strong identifiable brand. We also seek to create a graphic icon for street signs and social media. And the town has also expressed the interest in creating gateway signage, help define Oakland sense of place. So now I would like to invite up Mr. Joe Allery of Allery Design to discuss our development process and also unveil the design.
Hey, Mr. Joe.
Hi.
Okay, cool. Thank you for having me in, and this has been a awesome project for Allery Design. And mainly because Oakland is such an awesome place, though it wasn't it wasn't too big of a reach as far as the process that we that we took. When we designed an identity, we pretty much followed the same process, but the parameters are always different. You have a different location or a different business, you have a different team of people involved. So that part of it always changes. And what we had was a pretty extensive meeting and interview process, and we learned a lot from our branding team and committee, and we we went to work on some research based on that information to develop a strategy, which we used as a criteria to move forward for to develop this identity, basically. So. Our goal is to create a meaningful identity that tied to the values and character of Oakland. We wanted to define a sense of place, which is really important. We wanted to also preserve and share the town's history, and we wanted to stay close to our roots. So we had we had some definite parameters that we wanted to kind of follow. And we created a checklist, if you will, or a parameter that we wanted to sort of capture the vibe of Oakland. We wanted it to be somewhat historic, somewhat classic, timeless, sophisticated, yet simple. And we definitely wanted it to be a ode to nature, so to speak. So it had to sort of give off some charm without being too overt from that process. And of course, as unique as Oakland is, the identity needed to be very unique as well. We wanted to work with the O, of course, for Oakland, sort of a play off of the Oakland Nature Preserve, so to speak. And we we landed with an acorn. So what we what we wrote about the acorn was that acorns represents seasons, grow might humble beginnings, abundance, prosperity, good luck. And we felt that that was appropriate for Oakland, because Oakland stands so proud and is surrounded by natural group beauty and rooted in history. So with that, no further adieu. The logo that we came up with. Color?
Good idea. Signage. How?
Everybody would love to have, you know, whatever we come up with, you know, some identifiable street signage, because our signs are dirty and old. They need a refresh. Those are.
Social media. Uniform.
Now, if we chose, I know one of our tasks is to do the color correct.
Correct.
So if we if we chose the brick and this tree right here and the social media would become color, would it not?
It would.
Okay.
I'm sure. I think that's just a post, actually. So up in the corner there where the acorn is, is what is what would be on the social media.
All right.
Yeah, up in the left.
Okay. Okay, that would be nice. Did you guys talk about? Flags per season?
Not yet.
Okay.
But that would happen in sequence.
Okay. Am I ahead of you, do you have others?
You're always way ahead of me.
What?
What?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
No.
No, am I too far ahead of you?
You're always way ahead of me, but it's okay, I like that about you. What was the question?
Well, the question was, is it time for everybody else at the table to say what they think? But you've probably got a couple other things to talk about, sorry.
So, um, we just want to show you a little bit more about what the process and the next steps would look like. So obviously, you know that we want to update our website, which is a high priority, but something that takes a little bit more time. So that's on their style guide, which is something I think the mayor, you've actually mentioned before, so style guide is high on our list. Stationery and Joe's already working on templates for these things depending on your suitable and thoughts on the logo designs that he's submitted. Social media, which is showing you uniforms, so we're working on a uniforms policy, so we can have public works out there kind of working on like they've worked out with the public works. They're immediately identifiable when they come to your door, you know, hey, do you have a water leak? Everyone knows that's Oakland Public Works. And also for commission, we have a design for commissioners, department heads, town staff who are public facing for events, so we're working on that as well. The vehicles, which you've seen in in the PowerPoint, and then the signage. So seeing a design of the signage, we've talked about larger gateway signage, roundabout signage, 3D type signage with the temple with the acorn. There's just a whole host of things we can do with this cohesive design. So staff's recommendation would be to choose a color option, so you have that brick red and you also have that darker kind of forest green. And why we ask for you to pick one is so that we can develop that whole package with the colors that correspond with the one that you choose.
Can I? Can you talk, just in case somebody isn't completely, you know, educated on this, what a style guide is and why it's so important?
Right, so a style guide is going to be basically like a dictionary of how you can use a logo, the size, the color, what it looks like in reverse, the font, and it's supposed to help educate not only us who are using it all the time, but all of staff on how it should be used properly. We're also working with the town attorney, hopefully in the future, to have a potential ordinance come to the commission to protect it so that it's officially used, that it can't be misused or put on flyers for non-town sanctioned events or issues. So we're working on all that, but yes, the style guide will help make sure everything looks cohesive and it's always in line with the right colors, the right font, the right size, and everything is kind of streamlined to that one very strong brand.
So if you go to develop something, if you want a shirt or whatever, it'll tell you what colors you're allowed to use, what logos you're allowed to use, things like that, when when you design, like if we're doing a program of some kind, so on and so forth.
So it'll be like a copyright on that logo.
Yeah.
And we can't just go get whatever, a pink acorn shirt without permission.
Right, we just want to make sure everyone looks cohesive, like the the whole point of this is that Oakland has this one defined look. So I think if you get shirts, colors that make sense with the logo that you picked today, and Public Works has those uniforms, I think, you know, white works, like a tan or a tweed, we can pick out some colors for you all to look at. It's just gonna bring everything together, it's gonna look so much more professional and elevated and just cohesive, where we we're identifiable as Oakland staff. People might want to buy some merchandise in the center in the future, I know we talked about that last Christmas. The Oakland tree was super popular, and I think this year, maybe we can get some ornaments made that we could.
I think that'd be awesome.
Yeah. People do have, as you know, people have pride that they're Oakland residents, and I think this gives them something that they can wear or own to be proud of.
Well, and you know, people, and I'm sure you guys all know this, but you know, there's merchants in Winter Garden who's selling our, selling pillows with our zip code on it and our name on it already, so it's starting to gain the kind of notoriety that Winter Garden has on the merchandise that's all over Winter Garden.
And you know, they wouldn't be buying that merchandise if it wasn't selling.
I have a pillow.
For there's a market, we have, we bought the pillows too.
I have a pillow.
But we want to make our own, because we know we can do.
Yeah, I would rather buy it from us, I would.
But the cutting board, I got so many things.
But I'm still, I mean, I'm not waiting for that.
I mean, it might not be that extensive, but we can do some key pieces that we know are gonna be.
And then it's free center, it would be really cool.
So, yeah, I'll just wait for your discussion on the colors.
Yeah, so feedback and what color do you think you like?
First and foremost, this is amazing, Joe.
Awesome.
I didn't think I was gonna like it, this is my favorite for decades, two decades, and I love it. And I didn't think I was gonna see something that I liked better.
Thank you, that was really actually kind of one of the tough parts, because you do have a nice logo. It's kind of, it's kind of big.
But you can't spin too many things off of this for merchandise. And this, I love it. My preference is the brick, but I could think about so many things like how we have something to identify for, say, we have a golden acorn award for staff and for volunteers that we always have to, you know, what about this? Or a picture or a shirt or what, we've already been all over the board, but now, you know, the golden acorn award goes to.
And Maureen.
Acorn. Correct, right? We got also hardscape, precast acorns to identify the entrance from Lake County from Winter Garden, put some precast acorns, I know that I've always loved, and I'll always call it Liz's Liz home, the acorn she had on the chimney stack.
Yes.
You know, and then I went and put the oak tree, which was very difficult for the artists that I chose, and I don't think they could ever make it again, it's difficult, so this is easier to do. Pink acorns for Cancer Week, I mean, the list goes on and on.
Oh, yeah.
I love it.
We can do seasonal flags and.
You have one on your fountain already too.
Yeah, there's one on the fountain, we have an acorn on the fountain.
And I'm always happy when the fall merchandise comes out, even though it's out like now, because then I have acorns to choose from in the stores, so I'd rather choose, like I said, from here.
I have a question as far as copyright and does anybody else have an acorn in Florida? Cities, towns, villages, county?
Okay, so I don't know, but if we, and you could probably help answer this. I think if we protect our logo as a whole, we cannot be used officially permission or outside of official use or without permission. So we're gonna try not to protect it under ordinance as a whole so that they can't, it can't be used outside of our official town.
The specific kind of acorn, I don't think we can.
No, yeah, ours is our.
An acorn.
Complete logo and the O with the watermark, the letter marks.
I mean, I'm just thinking about, we couldn't do a peacock with, because Winter Park has a peacock. I mean, there's something that I'm.
Have to say that word.
We researched it all of the.
I'm just saying, I don't want someone else to come up here and say, that's our acorn.
No.
It's another Oakland park.
They want a peacock though, they can have it.
They have them all.
They can, no, they can have a picture of a peacock. I'm sorry. Rick, pick a color.
I am hands down red brick.
Okay, Joseph, red brick. That was hard. I was gonna be really upset if people wanted.
Hey, me too.
So Joe, I think you have what you need, right, for next steps? Hey.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, well, you want a motion on that, we probably do need one.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the color option as brick for the branding, the official color for the town use.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and since we do have a few people in the audience, does anybody else have an opinion? Yes, sir.
Would you like me to?
Sure. Come on up.
Just quickly, it was a plan and a sanction thing. My name's David Rosenthal, and I'm at 125 Petrus. I'm a graphic designer by background, and I didn't think I could like anything more than the existing logo, but I think it's fantastic.
I'm ready.
I think it's fantastic, I'm ready to buy the t-shirt.
Awesome.
It's gonna be great for branding, and I think the color brick is gives the historicity, and it's contemporary, it's fresh, but it also has history, so I think it's great.
Thank you, we love to hear that.
And on the heritage day, I mean, the our vice mayor, Mike Satterfield's not here, but we need to find an outfit of an acorn for him.
Maybe not everybody here.
Um, the other. We have a motion on the table, but the other thing, Alicia, is when this is ready, when the time is right, you need to make a big splash on a rollout with this.
Oh, yeah, I plan on doing that as soon as I have everything. Do we need to officially adopt it? I mean, you picked the color, but can you also like adopt it?
Sir, we can amend it, we can amend it, so what do you want, adopt?
Adopt it as the official town logo.
Okay, who made the motion?
I'll make, we do it.
Amend it, please.
I'll approve the motion, recommendation with the color brick option and also the brand logo for the town use official use.
Is that what you need? Okay, awesome.
No, second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we've talked to people in the audience, all in favor?
Aye.
You have what you need? Awesome. That's fun. It doesn't get much more fun than that.
We're talking budget.
No, I said it, doesn't. Than that. Okay, so now we get to talk about the approval of the town proposed mileage rate, which is fun, and the budget. You can go ahead. Oh, there it is. Good, Joseph?
Bob?
Okay. That's right.
Okay, ready?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna go through the tentative budget and the mileage rate, so you'll have three things at the end to.
How? I just have budget, which right.
And the public hearing dates.
Okay.
All right, so the purpose of this presentation is to present to the town commission a summary of the FY 2023 tentative budget, the mileage rate and the budget public hearing dates. So just a presentation outline, this is pretty much very similar to the previous presentations over the last couple years, just a couple of the budget principles that we're working with. We'll go through the general fund, the utility fund, impact fees, and we'll talk about the mileage rate and the public hearing dates and then requested action. So budget principles, always we're looking at the the mileage rate, and you know, it's been a priority of the commission to reduce the mileage rate. We've already done that three of the last four years, and the recommendation will be to do the same here. We are also looking at staff salaries and and then also making sure that we're setting aside adequate reserves. So the total general fund budget that's being proposed for next year is nine million, nine hundred and six thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Again, um, property values uh, for the town did increase by forty-one percent. Um, a lot of that being the uh, the apartment complex over on Oakland Avenue. Uh, but it is based on the mill rate of six point three, which is a reduction of the current year millage of six point four. Um, and the estimated reserves for unassigned fund balance is one twenty-five, six, one, seven, oh, eight. So we have been able to increase our reserves over the last two years and you're gonna see the audit presentation. I believe we've got that scheduled now for August ninth with Mike and Jolson. Um, and you'll see as we ended last year, um, twenty twenty-one, our reserves increased to about one point two million. And then looking where we're in and what we estimate for um, a little bit of surplus in the next year's budget, we're looking at a little, just under one point six million dollars for reserves. So um, again, the uh, increases to the general fund, uh, the big part, one of the big drivers is always the fire rescue. Uh, and that's funding is uh, the fire rescue funding is formula based. Um, it'll increase about three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars for the internal agreement. Really, when you look at our mill rate of six point three, about a third of that um, is dedicated to uh, fire rescue services.
And we have asked Orange County repeatedly to break that out for us and they're not.
No, they they will not. So again, it is part of our mill rate of six point three, but the town essentially pays Orange County the two point two mils that unincorporated residents pay. Uh, we do get a little bit of a discount on that, but that is essentially, and as we're growing, as we've added the apartment complex and we've added a number of houses, the amount of services and amount of calls that they make increases. So it just make, you know, makes sense that the, you know, the cost goes up also.
And that's something, when you need it, you need it.
You could not run a fire service for the town and have all the staff and and all the command staff and everything you needed. We do get great service, they got great interns and and everything that goes along with that. It does include uh, salary increases based on performance results for uh, staff. We've got a four percent for town staff, uh, five percent for directors, uh, four percent for the Oakland Police Department. We've got in the budget a five hundred dollar bonus for just the line staff. Um, just a one-time bonus and we are looking at the school budget to see that we can include that for the full-time staff with the school. So as they're updating revenues for this, the school, um, I've been looking at that so we can do the same thing on the school side.
And I have a good question. Um, and we do rate studies, um, when needed for all salaries.
We do look at, yes, absolutely. In fact, that's part of why the director. Um, and the other thing we, you know, um, that's has been committed to was uh, bringing the uh, Oakland Police Department retirement up to commence with other jurisdictions. Um, so uh, with this, there is an increase in, increase in the retirement contribution from twelve percent to fourteen percent for the, the sworn officers. Uh, this uh, budget does include one new sworn officer position. Um, we haven't added any new officers since twenty seventeen. We've added probably about fifteen hundred residents in that time. Um, so uh, I have uh, I am recommending adding one new sworn officer position as we go through the process to hire a new. I'm certain we'll, we'll look at that in more detail for future years. Um, but at this point, this, it makes sense what, what I'm recommending. I mean, even at our shifts and um, and like I said, we've, we've added quite a few uh, residents since the last time we added a, an officer.
That makes sense.
Because we are now using uh, contract planning services. Um, we've had deleted the assistant town planner and the director of planning and then during the course of this year, as we were doing that, uh, we did add the assistant town manager position. Um, other things, uh, increases to the general fund, uh, we did increase the budget for events. Um, we have Sanders Lane, Oakland Heritage Day, celebration of the Oaks as our main signature events. Um, and we have made sure that we uh, have included enough budget to make sure that those events run smoothly and we have uh, you know, great experiences for each one of those events. There is a little bit of money on the uh, on the revenue side for sponsorship. But I did want to make sure that we were, you know, committed to these events and that they were. This all, uh, and paying of the town center that we've done, uh, especially last year. You with, with that and hence. Moving forward. Um, there is the financing for the uh, Oakland Avenue Charter School, HVAC replacement is also included. Um, it is a multi-year project. Uh, hoping I'm gonna get with Pam about coming back in the next month or so and giving a presentation on how things are going over at the school. And so uh, and we talked about this previously, but they've done some great projects over there with with um, painting and and the HVAC, the first phase of that. Um, so hopefully we can give you an update on on that. So we'll, we'll give you an update on some of the things and some of the achievements over at the school over the next month or so. But that is, because it's a multi-year project, it, what, we had the full project in there during this year, what's left of the project will be budgeted for next year until we finish the project. Um, the African-American Cultural and Historical Grant Award of eighty-five thousand, we had a great presentation at the, at the last meeting and I've got your uh, book for you, Mayor, in my office.
Oh.
So we, we, uh, we had a great report that was done, uh, finishing up the first twenty-five thousand dollar grant. And then we've also been awarded eighty-five thousand to do some additional cleanup and to finish the fencing around the entirety of the cemetery. So that is shown in the budget as well as twenty thousand dollars for uh, baseline maintenance. We do need to look in the future with maybe setting up some volunteer groups or something to help with the maintenance of the cemetery. But I want to make sure that the town's committed to at least a baseline maintenance um, of the, of the cemetery. Um, so we, we've got that included. We've got both some, some improvements that'll be done as well as baseline maintenance. And then as we were just talking about the rollout of the branding, um, we've got some funding in there, twenty-five thousand dollars to uh, roll out. This will be incremental. Like I said, Elise, Alicia gave you the uh, kind of the, the steps we need to take. Probably one of the last things would be the, the water tower. Um, but you know, we, we have stationary, we have all the, all the things to, to go into this and.
How much do you think the water tower would cost?
I'm not sure, but well, it'll be.
The water tower costs.
It'll, it'll be in the plan.
But I would be, I'm just, when you think about it, that's not something.
I'll get you a price of that, Mayor.
What did the?
I mean, I just, you don't think about stuff like that.
But we've, we've got a, a lot of signage and a lot of things to.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, but I'm just.
We'll be getting into those first, uh, including, you know, updating the websites.
I just think it's funny.
We have data. Last time we repeated it, right?
I'll just say this, it'll be more than ten thousand, it'll be less than a hundred thousand.
Pretty safe.
We're, we're definitely gonna get that in there, but it's, it's one of the ones that's gonna take some time to, to plan that one out.
I just, I think it's funny, is all I think.
But the, the, all the other stuff, we're gonna try to get, you know, is, is PowerPoint templates and things like that. We're gonna get, get all that stuff, roll.
It might be close to a hundred because we're gonna make it look like an acorn.
There you go. We can just have paint the whole thing.
I just, I don't, I don't know what it costs to paint a water tower. I'm just curious.
Very unique.
It's, it's on the list. It's just, we've got a whole bunch of stuff to get there, so we'll, we'll, we'll definitely be working on it.
Okay, sorry. I digress.
We, we also have some other, I didn't, I didn't put it on here, but we, we have a few stormwater projects out there that we need to do, especially one down on Nixon, uh, between uh, the trail and Riley. Got some money in there to, to try to, to take care of some of those things, some, some maintenance issues uh, that are out there. Now we'll move to the utility fund. Um, so the total utility fund budget is uh, just over five and a half million dollars. Um, we do have, you know, projected increase in water revenue. I talked with Gabby uh, last week. As of last Wednesday, we had fifteen hundred and forty-four residential customers on our water system. Um, we're definitely showing increases in revenue on the wastewater side. Um, and then again, it's the same, uh, the four percent salary increase stat, uh, based on the performance of presles, uh, five hundred dollar bonus for uh, uh, staff. Then we have, uh, our reserves have come down a little bit in utilities, but we've been doing some, some different projects, but our estimated reserves are just under one point three million dollars.
Um, the apartments, are they separate water accounts for apartment or just one, it's the apartment?
Or full.
Okay.
I don't know if it's, it might be more than one account, but it's not separate.
It's not separate. Okay.
Not for the renter?
No.
No.
They, they do, just to clarify, they do submeter to their tenants, I found out. So they, they, they take our.
They give you a pro rate, they give them a prorated.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Yeah, okay, we, we don't have three hundred and forty-two customers, that, that's on them, however they do that.
Gotcha. Just curious about the number.
Um, it does have two, uh, the funding for two grant projects in there, so we're still working through a station six, which uh, Mike's working on right now as far as, as the construction of what station six, um, that's the one behind um, the Charter School and Public Safety Building. Uh, so we're working on getting that list station in and then um, the next step of that would be the connections for the school and the Public Safety Building. That's some in much higher than our original estimates, uh, as far as those connections. Mike just let me know that uh, he came across a uh, a cost care grant with FDP, fifty fifty cost care. So we're gonna go after that. I just wanna, you know, let you know that we are looking at some grant money. If not, we do have the connections programmed in the utility fund to make that connection.
Right.
Um, but uh, at this point, if we can get it to a grant, then you know, certainly we can do those funds for other things. Um, we do have the two American Rescue Plan projects, which is the alternative water plan project. Um, we talked about doing the SRF loan and we will certainly go after more legislative money on that project as well as grants for that project. Uh, cause that's, that's definitely a, a product that we need. It comes down to our consumption use permit. Um, and then the other project is redundant well, so they've been over um, packing in the casings on the well, um, over here next door. I didn't get too many. I know there's been a few little complaints about the, the noise, but actually it's been pretty quiet. I think um, have they, are they done with the uh?
Uh, no, no, they're about half finished with the, with the noise, noisiest part.
But they uh, they're doing the casing, then they'll do the, the, the actual drilling of the well and at, at some point you will see um, as they tap into the, the water, there will be a lot of water over there. Um, they have to run it for.
Yeah, it's eight hours at two, a little over two thousand gallons a minute. That's to produce that to be able to be viable.
So that water will end up in the retention ponds over there at Spear Park and and along the trail, so that's a couple of months away, but just to kind of give you a, we'll, we'll, we'll get information out. Um, we've already talked to Orange County about it, but just to give you a little preview of what's coming on, but that well's coming along and it's certainly something that we need as far as the redundancy of the system and the reliability of the system for the town.
Yeah, and I think it's important that we continue to work the state of end of it regardless of what happened this year.
This, because we, we got vetoed this year, we're kind of in a holding pattern legislatively until the next session.
Right.
Um, so next thing I'm gonna go through is the impact fees. So we've got a few, few projects in here and we've got about a, a little over a million dollars in water impact fees on that, that have been collected. Um, we have, we keep this Northwest Loop Study on, on the books as we uh, we're working on some other connections, but there, there is a possibility we're gonna have to look for uh, a connection there on that west side. So when we get to that point after the term pipe gets done and some of these other things settle, uh, we've got that money in there to, to do a study. Uh, we do also have the alternative water design in there for two hundred thousand dollars. We're keeping some funding in there to keep that alternative water product moving forward as we look for grants. Um, and we are gonna take out the SRF loan for the design, the four hundred thousand, the design. Um, just to keep that project moving forward. The further along we get, hopefully we can get the money for the construction side uh, with the um, uh, through the legislature or through St. John's or DDP. Um, and then we've got some money in there for future projects. Um, the other project that we've got some money in there is the water system bypass. We did turn that in as a legislative, um, they got a pot of money for the um, for local municipalities, about eighty million dollars, but my understanding is it's way, been way over asked for. So whether we get that money or not, but we did ask for about six hundred thousand dollars. And it would be a little bit of cost sharing on our side for that, so that's why we've got this programmed in here, uh, for that alternative, that um, uh, water system bypass. Uh, wastewater system, um, we've got some money that's been held in there for a developer agreement. Once Lonely finally finishes up their project over there, they're still working on some stormwater issues. Um, and then we've got uh, some reserves for future projects, um, that we can allocate. Um, it's nice to have those reserves in there, cause when you get a project and you cost care, we've got some money that we can do that. Um, the next thing is uh, parks and recreation, so we uh, we had a couple of things in this year's budget for the uh, for Spear Park. We are trying to get the, the last part of the playgrounds installed, so those should be coming soon. Um, the other ones have been kind of on hold. We are moving forward with Pavilion. Uh, it is a twenty-eight weekly time on the Pavilion. It'll be the same size as the one that's over at uh, Vanily Park. It'll be over near the playgrounds on that west side of the park and also the ADA accessible. So it, that's about fifty thousand dollars, but so essentially we've rolled this year's budget into next year for Spear Park so that we can get these last uh, components done, including the Pavilion. But we are getting ready to order that Pavilion and so hopefully early spring.
Good.
Time frame, we'll be able to get that installed and we'll work on the other, the other components. Um, I, we haven't, we've done a little bit over at the Sadler uh, Trail Park. If you've been over there recently, um, we've got those, those big barms of dirt that are, that are the big long berman dirt. So before we took that out, um, we've installed fence on the other side of that berm along that commercial area and we've planted a whole bunch of cedar trees. Like Mike, uh, great job, you know, putting this together so that we can get those cedar trees in, get the fence in, and now we're working on getting the berm removed. Once we get the berm removed, then we'll start working on the park in earnest with the trail. First thing will be the trail and then we're looking at some other components like some playgrounds and a dog park and some other things over in that.
Be nice.
Over in that south area. So um, again, what I had in there, I think was, was underfunded uh, to do the trail, so we've increased that to a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar um, budget and like I said, the trail's first and then we'll start talking about the other components. Uh, law enforcement, uh, again, this is for, for increases in capacity. We have a new officer coming on. So all of the equipment, the goods with having a new officer, including vehicles and computers and some of that can fall under the law enforcement impact fee, so we've got some money in there for the, the um, for the, the new officer. We have done some work over at the, the PD to increase uh, capacity i- in the building. Um, and that's being finished up as far as the renovations. There are some future projects in there, um, that we'll come back with. That'll be something to discuss with the, the new police chief as we move forward. So right now, we just have the funding in there for the, and equipment for the, the new officer.
Maybe that time we can get a tour or, cause we haven't gone to go visit what it looks like in.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, they're still kind of finishing up a few things, but they've, they've done a great job with what they've done as part of adding capacity, people have worked over there, you know, cubicles and, and increasing the supply room and some of those things. That was part of that project that we did this year, so. Um, then we finished up the last few things over there last time I was over there. Um, and then transportation is, is the uh, the biggest, probably the biggest component that we have under impact fees. Um, and we've got a few things under here, so got about two and a half million dollars um, in impact fees. Um, and that's um, after we've, we've got a million dollars that's uh, on hold with Orange County for the roundabout. Uh, but these are the things that we've got programmed in there for uh, for next year. Again, uh, Oakland Avenue Roundabout, um, we uh, the actual design and construction of the roundabout did not include the landscaping that goes with it. So we wanted to make sure we had uh, as part of the project, as soon as they finish the construction, we're gonna come in and, and do some landscaping, um, to make sure we, we put back what was already there. Um, so we've got that programmed in there. Plus, there's also post-design services with CPH that we want to make sure we have funded um, as they're doing reviews on change orders and then those kind of things. Um, we have money in there for some more turnouts, uh, like we, we just did the one on, on hall this year. Um, doing those, those paved turnouts uh, into the dirt roads. Uh, it's definitely been a huge help as far as. Doing those, those paved turnouts, uh, into the dirt roads, uh, it's definitely been a huge help as far as, as, you know, keeping things clean.
Yeah, it's nice.
The other thing I put some money in here for, so we've been in discussion with the developer of Riley Farm. And you know, per the development agreement, they put aside, I believe it was seventy-nine thousand dollars. Um, the, uh, traffic study called for just dropping in a, a turn lane into Jefferson. But rather than just dropping that turn lane in, uh, we talked about, um, using that money to do some enhancements on that Oakland Avenue and the intersection of Jefferson that are more consistent with the complete street project that we looked at last year. So we are going to work on, based off of the complete street components, uh, in that area, we're going to put together some, some renderings and then, uh, design. So I've got some money to add to the seventy-nine thousand from the, uh, uh, developers so that once we figure out exactly what that's going to look like, it has to do with some sidewalks, uh, some connectivity to the Westmore Trail, uh, as well as possibly a planted median right there in the curve that helps let people down. So it's, uh, it's all about that, doing those complete street components that was, uh, uh, that was called out in our, uh, what we did last year with the planning of Oakland Avenue. So rather than just dropping that, that turn lane in there, we're trying to actually do the enhancements, uh, for the, uh, complete street. Uh, we keep some money in there for transportation studies and designs as things come up. And then we've got the Star Street construction. Again, this is essentially rolling this year's money into next year because of the timing on the project, uh, just making sure that we have that, that project funded. And then we've got, uh, some money for future projects. Once we get through the roundabout of Star Street, um, then the commission can talk about some priorities, uh, as far as, as Oakland Avenue and capacity or some enhancements to Oakland Avenue, uh, with those impact fees. And then we've got, uh, money that we're kind of saving up with the administrative facilities impact fee. There's about two hundred and sixty-four thousand. At some point we're going to need to do a, a future space needs study. Uh, when we get to a point where we, we think we can move forward with the project. So that's where we're at with, with the impact fees. And then I just have a couple of things. Uh, last one is just fire protection. We've got one project that Mike's getting ready to finish up and adding a new hydrant. And really we're just, at this point, we're just looking at areas where we need to have additional hydrants, just to make sure we've got, you know, water available to where it needs to be, uh, in case we're, we've, uh, we've got some money in there, uh, for that. So, uh, then just to, oh, no, just to reiterate, the total budget for, uh, back these, uh, with the reserves is, uh, it's under, just over five point four million dollars. So other items, uh, just a couple of things that went up today, John. Uh, so the whole avenue stuff, the sewer project has been completed. And we're in the process of closing out the, uh, the grants on that CDVG being one of them. We had a St. John's and a DEP grant. So, uh, we've been working, we, we actually got some help with the, uh, the grant process with Tim Lee Horn. And so we're in the process of getting all those, uh, closed out. Another thing I wanted to bring up, so in the last, uh, couple of weeks, we got our renewal for, uh, health insurance um, through our broker and the, uh, the renewal shows a thirty-seven percent increase in rates.
That Joseph, um, like the norm right now?
Yeah, yeah, one more.
Okay. I figured.
I mean, but, but, you know, with our size, I mean, you know, you don't really have the capacity.
To leverage it down.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it only takes a couple of bad experiences, you know, just, you know, um, it can cause.
Yeah.
Expensive.
So it, you know, it just, i- it is and been, so we're, we are in that place where it's a thirty-seven percent increase. Um, and what I have in the budget right now would be about a ten percent increase and, and nowhere near that. So that is something we're going to need to look at. So one of the options that we have, um, and I talked to Maureen about it today. She's, she got, got all the information. It's looking at the Port of Lega Cities as a possibility. Um, I'm going to have them come and do a presentation at the, at the next meeting on August ninth. Um, with what they have presented, um, it would be about, it would be a similar plans that we have. It would be about a fifteen percent increase.
Yeah, I'm telling, and you can't turn on a dime on these things. So, you know, w- we gotta move quick.
Yes. Well, yeah, unfortunately just the timing of how things work that allows a whole lot of time to, to react. Uh, but we are going to need to look.
I think that, that's part of the plan.
Yeah. Absolutely. So we're, we're working on that, um, and we need to be able to roll this out and be able to talk to staff.
Well, yeah, and help people understand what the changes are and, you know. I bet, I mean, my experience isn't Joseph is far more an expert than I am is. I've had every health plan there is, the big ones, and they all are, tend to be the same comparable in what they cover, what they don't cover. Would you agree?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not too much difference. Yeah. It's just the cost profile.
Yeah.
So what they offer is, uh, United Health versus the Portland we have now.
Yeah, and those are two big competitors. Yeah. United Health is really, I think they may be number one in the country. They do a lot of small, medium-sized businesses. Yeah.
Well, if we move into the portal, again, we're, we're under a hundred. And, you know, we don't have a lot of leverage as things go. We move into the Port of Lega Cities, it, it's.
Gives you better.
Spreads out that risk. Um, and so you don't have these anomalies like.
Right. You get somebody who has a heart attack or cancer or something very serious. It costs lots and lots of money. It's, you know, I'd be all care of.
So, uh, like I said, this is kind of, kind of hot off the presses that we're, you know, where we're at with this and the, and, and going through this.
I think we knew that. I mean, it's not, it's not surprising to me. I'm sure it's not surprising to Joseph.
Um, and then the, the next thing I wanted to bring up, and I wish, uh, Vice Mayor Shatterfield was here. I did not include the shade structures in the budget. Uh, we do have a quote and we were talking about both parks, but right now I just have a quote because we just put that playground equipment in, um, at, at Spear Park. So I have a quote for what it would take to cover those and it's, uh, it's about eighty thousand dollars. Um, so if you add at least half of that or more to the Pollard Park, we're looking at about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars for shade structure. So like I said, I did not include that in the budget. Um, the recommendation is that you want me to bring it back in September and we can talk about it at, at one of the meetings in August if you want. Um, I can put it in the, uh, September for the final budget, but at this point I did not put those in there. The other thing I've been thinking about is do we consider, cause with Spear Park, the issue is, is you know, I've been out there at eleven, eleven-thirty, twelve, and you still have the sun kind of coming up. We still have some shade because of the trees on the east side. It says the sun comes straight up and then starts to move into the west. So between like twelve o'clock and, and, you know, till the sun goes far enough down in the horizon, you, it's, it's hot, you know, middle of the afternoon. Do we plant some bigger trees? Maybe get some of the, I think we can get like five and a half, five and a half inch caliper trees. And put a, two or three more trees on that.
Quickly put it so when the sun starts.
So that as they get bigger, that they'll start catching that sun on the west side. You're still going to have sun at the height of the, you know, noon, but as, as it starts to come down, if we can get a couple of trees in there. Um, you know, that's the other alternative.
Well, i- here's my thought and, you know, you guys need to express your thoughts too. I, I just cannot in my mind justify straight shade, shade structures at eighty thousand dollars. That's crazy. And I would much rather invest in the trees that will shade it. We might have to have a little bit of patience, but in the long term, it's going to be so much more cost effective and it's, you know, I remember when my, my neighbors at Liz's house, they had a tree in their front yard, a large one. And when that thing had to come down because it was, it needed to come down, what a difference it made in their backyard. I, I, I mean, we couldn't have dinner out there after that tree came down because of the sun setting west. So it real, the trees really do make a difference. But I just, I can't justify that kind of money.
I was looking for something like that, but not eighty thousand dollars.
That's crazy.
But at trees, you know, put some.
They'll be there for a hundred years if we buy the right trees.
We can get the other playground stuff in and stake out where the, the Pavilion's going to be. And then we can find some places to put through two, three, four trees, whatever makes sense to get them in and established. And the bigger the trees you get, but it take, sometimes it's a little more risk with getting them established and, and getting them to live. But we can go with some bigger trees and have those put in and try to, you know, jumpstart the.
I'd much rather spend the money that way.
I, I, I think that's a great option for Spear Park, cause there's room for it. What about Pollard Park? I mean, there's not a particular area for trees there to get that cash, that shade from the sun setting.
We, we planted trees at Pollard Park with the Kaboom Project. Uh, I think three of those trees survived the hurricane in seventeen. One did not. You take a look at those trees, they are just, they're, they're fabulous. So, uh, we can get that size tree for about a thousand.
But can you get them in there to provide shade?
Uh, at Pollard? Uh, not, not really, not without redesigning the playground and, you know, splitting it.
That's what I was.
Yeah, that's what he was asking.
Maybe wherever, maybe two more trees Pollard, maybe.
I know you could put it on the east side to catch that shade for the morning, on a Saturday morning for the kids to be playing there, but to catch the evening shade, it's, it's difficult to put it there.
Yeah, there's, there's not a lot of room between the Pavilion and the playground, but we, we can guess.
Let's, let's, let's think about a, an area that we can.
Let's look at it and see what we can move up with.
For that, we're, we're taking care of both. You know, and the same thing out at Sadler, you know, the, the, we've got a row of trees out there, but we'll certainly, we have to do some more planting out there. Mike did a great job with the cedar trees, cause those make a great buffer. So we're, we're definitely looking at the trees, but I, I kind of like that as an option for Spear Park and, and for Pollard.
For all parts, we, this is Oakland. So for all parts, we should find a place strategically east-west. I know the buffer is great for not, you know, north, south.
For south.
Yeah, but the east-west.
Yeah.
I mean, I have some trees in front of my house and I get shade the evenings.
But it, I mean, that tree came down at the Clark's house and we couldn't do, you know, they have an outdoor kitchen. We couldn't do stuff when it was hot. It, it, that tree, we had no idea how much shade that really provided in the backyard.
Strategize, I mean, just the trees, just because you put them there.
Yep.
A row of shade on the wrong spot.
Yeah.
And we can.
A- a- absolutely. So we'll move forward with, with looking at trees at, at, uh, at both those parks. And, uh, whatever makes sense.
Uh, on Sadler where you have the exercise equipment. Put it in the area where they're not going to grab their exercise equipment and burn their skin off.
Once, once we, uh, get that one planned out a little further, we'll, we'll definitely have a landscape plan for that. And the same thing, what we want to do off by the roundabout, we want to make sure that we come back in with some trees and some buffer, uh, where the trail is going to be and work with Orange County on that, cause I know that it's been a topic of discussion. Cause there were three trees that came down out there that were in the footprint of the roundabout. So, uh, we've got that programmed in so that we can come back. We're working on the, on landscape design right now and where the, the retention pond is and where we have ride away and where it makes sense. It doesn't mess up sight lines and things. We want to put some trees in, in the right places to give that buffer back to.
We should, we should be constantly looking for an opportunity to plant it.
We are, we are.
We, yeah.
I know we are.
Yeah. We, we have it underway right now over here on East Gully and around West Gully. There's a planted place right now.
Right. So, um, let's move on to the good news.
Well, last thing is Sadler Avenue. That lived back there on Sadler Avenue. Um, there's a little dirt road, the rest of that neighborhood.
That's good though, that's good news.
Um, the rest of the neighborhood's been previously paved and it got repaved with the, uh, the Septic Sewer Project. But there's one little strip of Sadler back there by itself. Be about thirty thousand dollars to pave that if we wanted to have it be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood.
I think it should be.
How big is, how, how long is this area?
Uh, it, it incorporates maybe, uh, seven down parcels. It's not very long. It's maybe three hundred feet, something like that. It's kind of old enough when those streets were originally paved for some reason. Nobody's, other knows why, cause by that is.
Well, maybe there wasn't anybody living there at the time.
So if you're all right, I'll just include that as part of the, the projects for when I come back in September.
All right. Moving on.
All right.
For an hour and a half, we're not productive anymore.
All right. So last thing, just like I said, the, the budget was preparing, usually in the six point three mil. So I'm, I'm coming out of the gate, not waiting until September, making a recommendation that would go from six point four to six point three. I will caution you that, you know, the, uh, uh, economy is certainly in some state of flux right now. Um, there's a lot of push and pull with the economy. Housing seems like it's going to slow down. Um, I don't think we're going to see property value drops like we saw in the past. Uh, but there's just a lot of uncertainty. Volatility and uncertainty. Um, we have, have a nice bump with reserves, but I would tell you moving forward that the, the commission's probably really kind of want to look at those reserve numbers. For Jolson, they'll give you kind of a, a, a temperature of that when he comes in for the audit. But they, it may be that you want to look at next year, looking at this a little differently as far as making sure you've got reserves rather than trying not to reduce the mileage more. Uh, because if the economy does pull off, you're going to want to make sure you've got reserves and, and not in.
Or ready for it.
Yeah. So I, I would tell you that, but this would put us four out of the last five years and a total of about point four, five mils. So we've gone from six point seven five to six point three.
Almost six point seven five, but who here was that?
That would have been, first year I was here in twenty seventeen, it was, it was at six point seven five.
And I, I am quite certain, even if we don't have the data, most current data, that we fall below, uh, you know, a few men, a few municipalities, including the city of Orlando.
Right. Um, again, public hearing dates, you can't conflict with Orange County Public Schools, Orange County Board of County Commissioners. Uh, the public schools are using what would be, uh, Tuesday, the September thirteenth. So, um, the recommended dates and Labor Day is on the fifth. But the recommended dates for our public hearings would be, uh, Monday, September twelfth at six thirty and Tuesday, September twenty-seventh.
Is everybody good with them?
Your problem. That, that's all, and the, the, the trim of guidelines that we need to follow.
Awesome.
So got three requested actions for you, uh, especially, approve the tentative mill rate of six point three, and that's what I'll, uh, turn into the property appraiser for name and I'll work that tomorrow. Get that to the property appraiser, uh, for the trim notices. Um, and then, um, so if you want to approve that first, and I've got two more approvals for you.
I'll make a motion to approve the tentative mill rate of six point three zero for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, which will be included on the trim notices.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions, any comments? All in favor?
Uh, hi.
Yay. Next.
Uh, approve the FY twenty twenty-three tentative budget of twenty-two million, four hundred and ten thousand, seven twenty-two. Again, we've already, uh, we've, you have already approved the, uh, the school budget. Um, so that twenty-two million does not include the school budget. When you see the public hearings in September, it will include the school budget and we will make adjustments in the school budget. We're working through the revenue calculator right now. I think things are looking pretty, pretty positive. So, um, again, just to approve the tentative budget, twenty-two million, four hundred and ten thousand, uh, seven twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty twenty-three tentative budget of twenty-two million, four hundred and ten, seven twenty-two, which does not include the OACS budget.
No, second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions, any comments? All in favor? One more.
Uh, approve the dates and times for the budget, public hearings for the town of Oakland, and they will be in this building. It's how they'll be advertised. Uh, Monday, September twelfth at six thirty and Tuesday, September twenty-seventh at six thirty.
Hey, kids.
Make a motion, approve the dates and times for the budget, public hearings for the town of Oakland, Monday, September twelfth and Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, but at six thirty PM.
I'll second it. That was a mouthful.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, any comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Staff, at your own risk.
I, I don't have anything. I just want to give Pam a quick opportunity to just give you an update with school starting, you know, the dates for school.
Sure. So the teachers are back on Monday, um, for pre-planning week, cause the students are back on August eighth. We were turning up. The traffic center here today now. So, um, we're basically in the last few days, just trying to get everything ready. Um, construction has been tremendous. Like it's been a massive project that summer. Forget how messy things are, but we're working to get it cleaned up so that we are able to have full access for our teachers.
And are we full?
Yes, oh yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know the numbers off the top.
I don't need them.
I'm working on that skeleton presentation. I know that you like things to be 10 minutes long because I'm a school, so I'm trying to figure out how to do that, but I'll have enrollment.
All right. Yeah, I, full is good, good answer for me. Okay, awesome, thank you. All right, anybody else?
I think, I think we covered everything.
Hey, Sal.
I'm good.
No, I mean, if you've got something to say, say it.
No, I don't have a.
Okay, Rick?
I'm good.
Oh, just two things, is anybody going to Hobnopp?
I'm not.
Thursday, okay, Thursday, I'm going. And then two, the city of Miami hired a heat officer, so they have, the city of Miami has a heat officer.
Say this again.
The city of Miami has a heat officer.
Are you kidding?
Yeah, I, I didn't.
It doesn't get that hot in Miami.
I didn't see on the news, local, I saw it on one of the major channels, so they actually hired a person.
They don't know, they don't even know what.
They have a heat officer, so, and she's talking, she was talking about trees, I heard her interview. So she was talking about planting more trees in the city of Miami, so. And I think that's the first heat officer in the country, so.
Well, New York, was it New York City where they were really suffering sometimes? But I mean, Miami's not anywhere near as hot as we are.
But they got a heat officer.
What is his, what does he do, the heat officer?
Liaison, probably.
He's dealing with climate change and then, and there's certain areas where there are less trees and it's like 10 to 14.
Or people who are underserved, that don't have any air conditioning, finding cooling places and communicating that to them. I mean, I could see what they do.
Right.
Really?
Trying to figure out trees in Ocean Drive on the beach.
On that same news.
Just doing a printout then.
Oh, yeah, yeah, also in that same news, Arizona is repaving their streets from black to gray. They got some special paving because the street is hot.
Are so hot.
It was hotter in those areas when they had black streets, so they, I, I just call it a, a piece of, so it's kind of.
Well, that makes sense.
Our dirt roads are cooler.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and if you, if you have a white car in Arizona, you're not able to find it in a parking lot. It's all white cars.
Let's really be, the last thing, what do we do if we have a, a child that has a disability in a certain area and a parent wants to have a signage put up in the street, you know, like a deaf child here? What do we, what, how do we handle that? Has someone approached me at the restaurant?
In, in the last 10 years, we've put up one, I think it's the deaf child and it was over on.
Be a hearing impaired child.
Basically, it's a.
Hotter with.
Comes from a resident.
Okay. Well, I have one, I had a request this morning.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to forward it to us and you have it in writing and we'll, we'll, we'll see what we can do?
Okay, okay, yes, over on, on the west side, yeah.
Oh, over by Pollard.
Private road, private, all the signage and all that over.
By the church?
Oh, I'm sorry, 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 sorry.
No, that's, yeah, yeah, right, right by the church, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, send us like, send us something so we know where it's at and we'll work.
Okay.
We'll, we'll get something, yeah, we can do that.
Awesome, awesome. Yeah, that's it, that's it, man.
I'm happy to be back. And that's all I have. So Joseph, you're on.
If all hearts and minds are satisfied, listen, jury, it is 8:53 PM.
We went, we ran 23 minutes.
Thank you.